Why letter? Everything's why. Reporting now, start the report.
Uh, this question.
Door downstairs won't stay long.
Okay, I will get it, man.
I'm going to call to order the Borough Council regular meeting for Monday, May 9th, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please? Chief?
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
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 He's sorry.
Sorry.
Here.
Thank you. Gets easier from there.
Okay.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. All right, moving on to three announcements and presentations. We have none, so we're going to... Oh, that's right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Prior to tonight's meeting, Morrisville Borough Council met in executive section session, excuse me, not section, executive session for approximately 1 hour and 30 minutes, where police personnel and collective party negotiation matters were discussed, as well as litigation involving Williamson Park.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to public comment. Okay. All right, Mary Herenda, just give me one second, please.
What?
Just give me one second.
Sure, no problem. Oh, yeah. All right.
Okay, whenever you're ready, name and address, and then you have 3 minutes.
Okay. Yeah, Mary Herenda, 343 Crown Street. You all have a letter from Mr. Flager that he wrote in rebuttal to our lawyer, Mr. Streton. Mr. Flager states on the third page of his letter of May 3rd, 2022, to Judge Gilman, that the RDA has the absolute purpose, power, and authority to seek grants to improve Williamson Park based on Pennsylvania's urban redevelopment law. Actually, as Mr. Flager quotes the law, it gives the RDA the power to do this, to do parks adjacent to or in connection with redevelopment areas. Williamson Park should not be in a redevelopment area because it's an actively used park and is not blighted. The borough does not need the RDA to obtain grants for park improvements. All municipalities are eligible to apply for grants from the state agencies, organizations supporting parks, corporations, et cetera, on their own. Mr. Holbert gives an example that the RDA's worked with Warmminster Township to obtain grants to create open space next to Warmminster Community Park, where he said no other redevelopment is occurring. After checking on Mr. Holbert's statements, it's clear that this open space project in Warmminster is a redevelopment project. The project involves the demolition of Navy housing called Shenandoah Woods on the former Warmminster Naval Air Warfish Center, a hazardous waste site that is best known for contaminating the township's drinking water supply. Contaminants include the volatile organic compounds TCE, PCE, their breakdown products, and the long-lived PFAS compounds, or forever chemicals, per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. PFAS compounds are ingredients in firefighting foam used at Naval Air War Station. Naval Air War Station is closed and undergoing cleanup now since 1996. Shenandoah Woods was the site of a large waste disposal pit where paint solvent, scrap metal, aircraft parts, et cetera, were disposed of from 1955 to 1970. Shenandoah Woods Housing was built in the 1970s, and the base was closed in 1996. The homes in Shenandoah Woods have been found to contain asbestos. The work to be overseen by the RDA of the site includes removing of the existing homes, sewer system, and roads, then seeding and vegetating the site. This is the redevelopment project of an extremely blighted and contaminated area. This is not Williamson Park. Any comparison is inappropriate.
Deborah Colgan, please. Name and address, and then you have 3 minutes.
Deborah Colgan, 120 West Hendrickson Avenue. I'd like to comment on the blight report that was approved by Marsville Council in 2021. This document still stands. Marsville has declared Williamson Park parcels have blighted conditions. The report is the basis for including Williamson Park in the certified redevelopment area. So let's take a look at the veracity of this report. Is it truthful? Is it fact-based? Let's remember who authored it, the RDA. Photos 2, 3, 5, and 6 show the northern parking area along Delmore. This area serves as a link to eight different trails and designated routes. But Marsville has declared it an economically and socially undesirable land use and deemed it a condition of blight. Photo 7 shows the old school snack bar, pool snack bar. It's a well-used spot, but the report says it too is an undesirable land use. And instead of painting it properly, the borough just patched over some graffiti, then called it, called it "condition of blight." Photo 8 includes the parking area along Delmore Avenue at Union Street. The borough sadly allows road repairs to be staged at this highly visible and cramped spot. The borough has declared this illegal dumping and has called it "a condition of blight." Photo 13 shows the southern end of the park, an area full of promise and that has been discussed in the open space plan. Yet the borough has described this as, this open space as a vacant lot and declared it as an undesirable land use and a condition of blight. How can this council allow these fallacies to stand? The justification to include Williamson Park within the redevelopment authority, redevelopment area is based on a contrived narrative by those pushing poorly designed notions. Now let's look at the claim that the inclusion of the redevelopment area will provide funding for park improvement. At the planning commission meeting, when the RDA presented this report, and I had the auto-recording, I asked them specifically to provide examples of a park that they had improved. They said that they had rehabbed a three-acre trailer park. Not a park, a trailer park. As it turns out, though, the truth is that they provided the support for remediation of the site by removing old structures. The township received DCNR grants for the improvements. When I asked them to give us examples of existing parks that they had rehabbed, they would not respond. So what is the purpose of allowing the park to be declared blighted and included in the redevelopment area? There is no logical or rational explanation. Williamson Park is not contaminated. It is not a brownfield site. It is not blighted. It needs attention, as this community has been begging for. Declare Williamson Park as public land to be used solely for the purposes of recreation. Remove Williamson Park from the certified redevelopment area. Provide potential investors in our town an accurate picture that we have to offer and a real vision for our community. Thank you.
Mr. President, one, one second. How much more did you have? There's only five people here. Okay.
Don Rice? Name and address, and then you have 3 minutes.
Don Rice, 343 Crown Street. I want to review the council's actions that resulted in our legal action. The Donated and Dedicated Property Act prohibits park development unless approved by Orphans Court. Morrisville Borough's Resolution 1066, expanding the certified redevelopment area to include Williamson Park without Orphans Court approval, violated the DDPA because it provided, quote, "ownership interest in the park." John Van Louveney, Select Morrisville's attorney, explained it clearly in his November 2020 presentation to council, when he said Select Morrisville needs the RDA to have ownership interest in the park in order to submit its development application. You can't develop what you don't own. Now Select Morrisville no longer has council's support, but the RDA ownership interest remains. Why? There's no legitimate reason for the RDA to maintain any presence in the park. The RDA has no ability to get any grant that the borough cannot, none. Its presence in the park discourages park improvement grants. Who wants to give such a grant to the borough when the borough can attempt to have the park developed? The RDA presence in the park hurts the park and the Morrisville residents it serves. I've heard the excuse that Resolution 1066 cannot be rescinded because that would bind the hand of future councils. Future councils' hands are bound all the time. Relevant examples are Greystone, the Dog Park, Patriots Park, and the River of Farant Nature Preserve. Binding the hound hand of council has a specific legal meaning, which involves contracts. For example, suppose council decided to get rid of Republic Services because they didn't pick up trash last Monday on Crown Street. Say council decides to replace Republic with Waste Management. Council can't do this because their hands are bound by the previous council that signed a contract with Republic Services. Binding the hands of future councils occurs when a contract agreed to by a previous council prevents them from taking action. Rescinding Resolution 1066, next page, cannot bind the hands of future councils because there are no contracts involved. It is an excuse that is insufficient on the face of it. That's all I really have to say. Well, one more thing. I, I know how much y'all enjoy my presentations when I come up here, and I have an offer to make you. If you rescind Resolution 1066, you've seen the last of me coming up here and complaining about it. That's all. Thank you.
It just wouldn't be, it just wouldn't be the same, Mr. Rice, at least. If, if, when this is all settled and done, he can come up and just give us a weather report, doesn't matter. We'd love to hear from you.
Sam, our lawyer was involved in Carton Park down in Downingtown. That case took 10 years.
Jane Berger.
So I could be coming here for a while yet.
Good evening. Jane Berger, 90, West Maple Avenue, Morrisville Borough, Pennsylvania. I just want to congratulate our newest member of council. I wish you well and much success. I was able to see the mayor. You posted on Facebook, the swearing-in, I appreciated that. But I must have missed the post to let us know it was going to happen because, believe me, many of us would have come down to be here in person to congratulate you and wish you well. You're smiling tonight, and there'll be some nights, because of your job up there, that you may not have as big of a smile. But as long as you do the right thing, the right way, for the right reason, you will be successful, and that way, Marsville will be a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. That's it with public comment. We're going to move on to Action Item 5, Approval of the Minutes. 5A, Approval of the Borough Council Regular Meeting of April 19th, 2022. Can I have a motion? Motion in the second discussion. All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stentions?
Let's state it.
Motion passes 7-1 with one, one extension.
Mrs. Murray?
All right, moving on to 6, Finance, 6A, the Treasurer's Report. Due to May 2022 meeting being rescheduled, the Treasurer's Report for April 2022 will be provided at a later date. Move on to 6B, which is a call for a motion to approve the bill list. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion in the second discussion.
Andrew. Yes. So I have one thing. I know I asked Judith this question, so I, I just want her to reiterate it for the public. There was a bill for $112 for a film conversation with Husam, and my question was, was that a personal call or a zoning call? And Judith replied?
I was informed it was a zoning call, and I informed the solicitor that if there are personal causes, that they should not be taken, and they should not be utilizing any of the taxpayer dollars for that, such of that, such of that nature, that it would have to be related to zoning.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes 8-0. Moving on to Report, 7A, the Mayor's Report.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things coming up that I'll be doing. Of course, the Memorial Day Parade is coming up, a great tradition here, so I've been marching that for years. I'm, I'm proud to do it again this year, so I'm looking forward to that. And then another place I'll be coming up is June 18th at 50 North Pennsylvania Avenue in the parking lot across the street from the Compass Fellowship Church. There will be an event put on by the Single Parent Fellowship. This is also something that's been done quite often here by a woman named Miss Crawford, and she's been doing this for years. There's going to be speakers, games, prizes, free clothes, and other surprises. So I'll, I'll be there as well. So, um, on another topic, I just wanted to thank both our chief, George McClay, and our council for their due diligence on getting some new officers, part-timers hired since I've been here, and it's really appreciated, and it's something that I'm looking forward to more in the future. But I specifically want to thank council for doing the two conditional hires last month so we could get these people started and signed in. We've already signed in one officer this morning, and we hope to do another one very soon. So thank you, everybody, for that. I really appreciate it. It means a lot to our, our public that we're looking out for their safety. And then I also would like to welcome Ms. Ms. Murray over here. Congratulations, welcome up here to council. And I'd like to point something out that I'm very proud of here tonight. If you look to both sides of me, you can see for the first time in a very, very long time, there's no empty chairs up here. So that's good to see. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. 7B, Police Chiefs Report. Chief?
We've had a large amount of catalytic converters being installed. They first started over in a manner, and it's now moved across the borough. We're not alone in this. Catalytic converters are a huge theft problem all across the country. I'm trying to get a task force together across our county to do something about it. But just a theft tip, if you do have a large truck, anything over an F-150, try to park it near a light, try to park it in your driveway. This is something, the catalytic converters are removed within 30 seconds. People crawl underneath a, a battery-powered saw, and they just, they walk away with them. This is every day all across the county. We've been lucky, this has just started to hit us. It went bad for about three or four days, and it hasn't stopped. We did lock up one person, but this is a problem that everybody's going to have. Enforcement truck traffic, I hope you've noticed the increase down on South Pennsylvania Avenue. We've been writing tickets. Trucks coming off of one, non-stopping for the stop sign. You've also had the Pennsylvania State Police, they've been stationed on the other side of Post Road, because that's really the only place they can set up, stop traffic, and bring the trucks in for inspection. I did send the mayor the statistics. Chief, did you send them across to everybody else?
No, I did not, but we can do that tomorrow first thing.
We have statistics on how many tickets they give and out to the truckers. So they have promised me that they're going to try to be there once a week. And what else we got going? And everybody knows the police vehicle did get delivered and stay on its tie-ons, and it'll probably take about three months before it's marked up and put out onto patrol. Okay, thank you.
Chief, thanks for your efforts for the trucks down on South Pennsylvania Avenue.
All right, moving on to 7C, the Managers' Report.
As you can see, the Bridge Street project with PennDOT, the drawings that were approved that are over here to the left of me, the bids were approved, they came in line with the budgeted amount through PennDOT, so work should begin shortly. It's very exciting because not many times do the bids come in with, in line with the budgeted amount with such a large project such as this. So we're, we're excited to see some progress. I've been reviewing current grants and possible grants. I had sent an email to Gilmore, and I have some information that I had just received that I'm going to be forwarding to council with some flood mitigations, some greenway trails, things of that nature. It was said by council that we need to not work with any grants that require matches right now due to the fact of our budget issues. So we'll be looking at those. If there's anything that would not be detrimental to our budget, we certainly wouldn't propose anything of that nature, but we'll have a list of things to go over with council, hoping to be able to do that shortly. And as you can see down the line of some of the administration and finance items, I don't know if anyone has any questions regarding them.
Mr. Parker?
Go ahead.
I was just wondering, with regards to the EIT, have we actually made an official motion, or who is actually going to be doing the collecting? Have we determined between Keystone and Berkeimer?
I'm going to let you take that.
That's a, that's a county-level decision. So under the state law, under the LTEA Local Tax Enabling Act, the county, I should say, a tax collection committee, in each case, basically every county, sets up who deflectors for the entire county. So that's decided, that's taken out of each individual municipality's hands, so it's easier transfer. So ours will be Keystone.
Correct. Yes, and the tax collection committee information that I had provided to you, we should see that on a monthly basis.
Okay. And then the, the American Rescue Plan that was reported, can we get a copy of that?
There is, there's a one-page sheet that just says I did it. That's all that takes place now. Everything is online, and that's all I get at this point. So I'm hoping to be able to get some type of a response as to it's completed and done. I've been checking in, and I haven't gotten anything.
But my, my question was about what, what was filled in? Like, did you just put all zeros because we didn't do anything with it yet, or?
Correct. You have an option to take several different ways of reporting items because of the fact that we were eligible to report in the manner that has been newly provided to us as of April 1st. That's how I reported, that we have not spent anything to date, and that we're going to take that one-time exemption, and because of the fact of the population that we have and the amount that we were provided. And as I was saying, because the rules did change, that's why we were waiting, because the changes, the changes took place April 1st. So I'm, again, waiting for something to come as a report. You have to physically check in. It's all online. It's, you go into a portal. There is no physical copies anymore. That's how it is. So I'll be checking just to make sure that the reporting that was done prior to my being here was done correctly, because there was some prior reporting done. And as soon as I get some sort of, of reporting back to me, then I'll be meeting with council as to some of the things that we would like to be able to do with the funds.
And one last question. Part of this was investigating a payroll company, and I was just curious, we have this on our agenda this evening. Can you give us any more details with regards to that?
Certainly. What I did was I sent an email to the Bucks County Consortium. That was with all of the managers in Bucks County, and your question virtually goes to all of them. And then anybody in a municipality that would like to respond back to me is able to do so. I did receive three responses back from three different managers informing me of the payroll companies that they were utilizing, the amount of employees they have, the costs, and so forth. So that's how I was able to put a generic number on the agenda this evening. I had also reached out to two different companies probably about six months ago, trying to see if, if that was something that would be viable for the borough, and I'll, I'll again be reaching out to those companies.
Were those, those that responded, were they comparable communities?
One of them was, the other two were not. But when we talk about comparable, one was a larger municipality with more employees, one was a smaller municipalities with, small municipalities, small municipality with less employees, although all of them needed the quarterly taxes done, they all needed the yearly W-2s, they all needed the W-3s and so forth. So those are some of the things that I'm looking for. So that was comparative.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have a question? Thank you, Judith. Thank you, Judith.
Welcome.
We're going to move on to 7D, committee reports. Does anybody have a report?
I have a report for the Morrisville Parks and Recreation meeting that was held on April 26th in the Borough Hall. In attendance was Nancy Sherlock, committee member, Andrew Lubin, committee member, and Brett Anderson, mayor. Along with that was Deborah Colgan, Mary Herenda, Jane Berger, and Nels Berry, who is representing Imagine Morrisville. The meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM by Nancy Sherlock, the chair. Me, Catherine Price Engelhard, was not in attendance. Motion was approved. The minutes was made by Andrew and seconded. And I'm not going to read every little line item, because I'll be here too long. But Nels Berry, representing Imagine Morrisville, it's a volunteer civic group, gave a presentation on a one-day event they would like to have in July this year. It's a giant slip-and-slide proposal to be held at Williamson Park in the area of the sledding hill. That sounds like so much fun. The group is in the process of applying for a 501(c)(3) status. It's not complete yet. They are not an insured organization and are hoping that the borough would sponsor and assist with the insurance. They have a vendor and will contact them to see if the vendor carries insurance. I can say they probably will. They're looking to have a couple food vendors, and vendors will pay the vendor fees. So, and they're working out the details. And they're considering charging a fee of like $5 for five rides, or something like that. There was a question regarding too much water and on-the-ground safety, other things to consider before it's okayed. Nancy talked about the borough looking into determining liability insurance. Noel also mentioned that the Morrisville Yard, the Rotary, would like to take a project on updating the stage in the park. This one involved relocating the ramp in the front of the stage, painting, and possibly electrical and lighting. There was a miscommunication with the borough manager, but that seems to be corrected, on giving permission for fundraising. The Williamson Park grant that had been mentioned in the past, Nancy said her conversation with Judith Danko involved Judith asking for everyone to be patient at this time, and she hopes to see that this through. Members present would like the borough to use rescue money for the match. Nothing had been decided yet, and Judith mentioned at the last council meeting that $15,000 had already been drawn down on the grant, but we didn't have the details. The dog water fountains, the borough has not been involved with repairing them at this time. The Dog Park Committee is handling that, and there is some dispute with the plumber for the work to be done. I actually talked to John tonight, and at least one of the water fountains has been repaired. General discussion, Nancy asked the committee, if this committee would work on getting all the memorials in the park organized or assembled in one place, because they're currently throughout the park. Andrew said his son works for Home Depot and can help arrange some materials from our local Home Depots. And there was a mention that the railroad ties and other debris left by the railroad workers near the preserve, and can we have the borough contact them to get that removed? Would it be possible also for various equipment and materials that are being staged in the parking lot at Union and Delmore to be staged in a larger northern part of the park? Currently, the materials are falling down onto the hill and the park trees in that location. There's more room from the northern location on a flat surface, and Nancy will contact the borough manager. Informational, Jane Berger said that the Morrisville Business Association would like to have their annual car show in October, and Andrew suggested that they do either the 17th or the 24th because of larger shows in the county beginning that month. And Mary Herenda said there's two large ground hog holes in the levee, and they are in an area the most northern baseball field. And Nancy said she'd also contact the borough on that. Debbie said that Judith and Ted are working on a plan to be able to plant trees in the fall. They've been missed in the opportunity of the last two cycles. We'd like to get back on track. Discussion ensued regarding, known as the pig lot on Delmore Avenue. It seems to be wetter and wetter at this time as go by. Is there a leak or canal causing that? And we're going to look into that. And no other business was discussed. The meeting was adjourned at 8:55. Thank you for those, thank you Nancy for taking the minutes and running the meeting for me.
Thank you. Is there any other words?
I have a quick, real quick question. The stage, what was the, the part of the report about stage?
The Rotary is looking to raise some money to rehab the stage, apparently, and one of the things that they mentioned was putting the ramp, they said in the back. I suggested maybe the side, because the back does have, you know, parking and so forth, but, so that was a goal of theirs.
Okay. I don't want to, I'm in, in no way am I knocking the Rotary, and I don't want to sound like a Debbie Downer or negative saying this right now, but in this world that we live in right now, that is not a stage. That is an elevated picnic area for picnic tables, okay? We would have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to make that a stage, to make that something viable that actual, real talent is going to come to perform on, to draw people. Or we're going to have the same events, we're going to have 15 people show up. Acoustically, it's atrocious, and I know that because I've done plenty of sound on that stage. There's no lighting. Stage lighting is number one for lighting. Halogen bulbs that come on at sunset, that's not stage lighting. There's no restrooms. There's no dressing rooms. So, I mean, I get, you could call it a stage, because it kind of, but as far as a, for a performance venue, there, and again, this is not, nothing against Noel. I know Noel loves this town, and Noel wants nothing but good, and so does the Rotary. But that is going to cost a lot of money to make that a stage versus, it's an elevated picnic area. The only difference between that and the other pavilion is one's up in the air and one's not. It's not a stage right now.
It's more of just a pavilion. That's really what it is.
Right, right.
And I think they know that.
Okay.
And I think lighting-
Moving a handicap ramp is not upgrading a stage.
So, go ahead.
I was just saying, yeah, we understand that. The controversy was Noel was under the impression that the Rotary could raise money for this. And I just had voiced some concerns about that, because, you know, what if they raised $10,000 but only spent $5,000, and then people are going to think that the borough, you know, I'd rather it be something different than that. If there had been a fundraiser, it comes directly to the borough, just so that we can be open about all money that comes in. And there's no question about it. But I think that they, they probably understand that.
I think they also understand about sound, sound and lighting, that that's a huge, that's a huge issue.
And a restroom, and a dressing room.
And a restroom, yeah. And, and actually the backdrop, like Noel wasn't, Noel wasn't familiar with the fact that the students at the high school will be, I mean, it's part of the mural project, but it's not really, because it was already in place. But the students at the high school should be able to present us with a design soon about what to do for the backdrop. So, and which will be, that alone will make it a little bit, you know, more attractive.
But, like, if it's going to be a stage, like, with the way it's set up now, then for a jazz concert, yeah. If we're going to do a-
Plays, or-
A play about Queen Elizabeth, that's not really a good background for-
It was a challenge when the theater did the-
Man Who Bought a Country.
Man Who Bought a Country, yes, yeah.
And if I may clarify, I think that's part of this, I had overheard a conversation that there was going to be fundraising regarding this, and that the Rotary Club was very interested in pursuing this. My response to that was, I can't stop you from fundraising, but the best thing to do is put a plan, a written plan together. Go to Parks and Recreation, go to Council, get approvals, and then move from there. So there was a misunderstanding, from what I understand, that I approved this plan, which there is no plan, and I did not. So again, what I continue to tell-
Misunderstanding.
What I continue to tell everyone is, put a written plan together, come to Parks and Recreation, bring it to the Borough Council, bring it to myself so I can provide it to Parks and Recreation or to the Council. So we have an idea of what you really want to do, so we don't just have people fundraising and collecting money for things that we really don't even know what they're for. So thank you for the opportunity to clarify that.
Scott, I disagree. I've seen some nice talent up there, so.
Oh, no, I'm not disparaging the talent that we've had there. I'm, like, last summer, I saw a couple shows at Mercer County Park. People from Marsville post on Facebook every week in the summertime that they're going to the amphitheater in Ben Salem. The talent, okay, the acts, the performers that are going to perform at Mercer County Park, or they're going to perform at the amphitheater in Ben Salem, or at any other, they go up all the time.
Wouldn't happen.
Not happening here.
No.
I agree. I understand what you said.
All right, can we move on, please?
Yes.
I have one more question about committees, though. This is actually, I guess, this would be for Judith. This was in the report that we got from, from Mike, from zoning. Oh, I'm sorry. This was a question about the cell towers of the Stockton Building. He did mention that he wanted to make sure, and I don't know if this is something we pass on to our attorney or not, but that, he said, he did find it interesting, the only place an antenna is allowed is by special exception in the RN zoning. We have to be careful to review Act 50 of 2021 so that we're not in violation. So we may have to adopt an ordinance or two, is what he said. And I'd really like to make sure we get on that so that we're, so we're in compliance and don't get challenged, particularly since that's a challenged building. So where do we go from that?
Sure. Mike is continuing to review things. What we're doing is we're looking for some files, we're looking for some old documentation is really what we're looking for at this time. We found some more current items, as I reported to you, but we're looking for some of the older information. And once we find that, I was going to be reaching back out to Council and then the solicitor to see if Council wanted to entertain the idea of updating the ordinances.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other committee reports? I'm going to move on to eight, which is action items. Eight A, call for a motion to approve payment in the amount of $110,000 and zero cents to the Marsville Fire Company as per the 2022 fire fund budget contingent upon receipt of their 2021 financial statement, schedule of events, current roster, and 2021 audit.
So moved.
Motion in a second, discussion.
Andrew is second.
All right, hearing none. Roll call, chief.
Ms. Engelhard.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, motion passes seven one with an-
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Parker. I thought that when you abstained, you had to give a reason for why you were abstaining.
She can give a written reason, but it would be because she wasn't here for any, any of the prior information, which would be satisfactory.
No, but we didn't get the financial statements yet.
Did she abstain?
So when you provide a written explanation, obviously, yes, you can abstain. The issue with abstaining is more to deal with the fact that they don't want people to switch the votes. So the concern here really doesn't apply. I mean, if the person feels they have a bona fide reason to abstain, they're allowed to.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you abstain or whatever?
Yes, Ms.-
I did. Ms. Murray did.
Ms. Murray did, yes. All right, moving on. Eight D, call for a motion to approve payment in the amount of $59,000 to Capitol Health EMS per the 2022 EMS fund budget contingent upon receipt of their 2021 financial statement and audit. The payment amount of $44,000 reflects the deduction of $15,000 for the 2022 annual fee due from Capitol Health Systems, Inc. for leasing the building located at 139 North Washington Street, Marsville, Pennsylvania, per contract.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
$15,000, is that something you got, Judith?
Yes, if I may.
Because that looks like something new. I've never seen that before.
It is. Thank you. The contract that was negotiated was with the same fee schedule, although there was going to be a $15,000 lease fee for our building.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, chief, one more time.
Ms. Engelhard.
Yes.
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 Ms. Murray.
Abstain.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
Mr. Robbins.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes seven one, being an extension. Eight C, a call for a motion to approve the resolution establishing a new account with PNC Bank in accordance with the terms of the police vehicle grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion. All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. All right, motion passes eight zero. Eight D, a call for a motion to approve Chief McClay's request for permission to investigate damage to her vehicle, an administrative investigation according to Police Directive 113.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, discussion. All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Motion passes eight zero. Eight E, a call for a motion to approve the update to the borough manager Danko's contract pertaining to the pension section 8.1.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passes eight zero. Eight F, a call for a motion to approve entering into an agreement with Vinjay Kapoor with the rate, the fee rate of $225 per hour not to exceed $16,500 to complete an Act 111 study and present hearing testimony as needed.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, discussion.
Thank you.
All right, hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passes eight zero. Eight G, a call for a motion to accept the resignation of Micah Hines.
So moved.
Per letter dated May 2nd, 2022. We have a motion in a second, discussion.
I'd just like to say thank you to Micah for his time here. I know you worked diligently with, you know, with the staff. I think it was Andrew, but I'm not sure.
Yes, it was Andrew.
Yeah, I want to second Ms. Sherlock's comments. I appreciate all the work that Micah did for us through a very difficult time.
During that period of time after we lost our borough manager last year, I worked very closely with Micah, and he gave, you know, gave it his all and did the best that he could, and I greatly appreciate how he's getting us through that difficult time.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passes eight zero. Eight H, a call for a motion to- Eight H, a call for a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to contract with temp agency for Borough Office temporary staffing needs.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Judith, do you know what staffing needs you'll be looking for?
I'm working on a spreadsheet right now.
Okay.
Is temp agency the name of the agency, or is it just generic?
It's just generic, yes. We'll be missing two people-
Contract with a temp agency.
Yeah, a temp agency. I'll be looking for some items through finance, and I'll also be looking for some items for the office area that some staff members may be out for a while.
Question, Mr. Parker, will we be coming back with any more motions regarding what the details and costs and so forth are, or just going forward? I mean, we talked about, there are two possibilities of getting some interns, and I'm just wondering, is this somewhat premature?
I was hoping that I would have the ability to do what is needed. Could you please confirm that?
Yes, it's confirmed.
Okay. Wait, I'm sorry, what does that, I mean, Helen, what's Helen confirming? I'm sorry.
That it's as needed, whatever need, whatever work she needs, whatever help she needs. She said she's putting a spreadsheet together, which I'm sure she'll share with us.
Real quick, let's just explain what's going on here. Ms. Lohol is not deciding anything on behalf of you. She is the one who's made the motion. She's explaining what her motion entails to you.
Okay.
So that is her motion, that she's made the motion to contract so that our Borough Manager can do what is necessary to fill, contract with a temporary, a temp agency, and fulfill the role she needs as there are absences for different reasons in the staff office.
And to that, can I just ask this question, too? Are we still going to pursue the interns? Or no?
It has nothing to do with the other.
That will depend. It will depend.
Okay.
It's imperative that I have a temp before I have an intern.
Would it be fair to say that we would pursue the interns if we're able to meet the requirements of the program?
Correct. Thank you.
That's not necessarily part of this resolution.
No, it's not, but it could have a determination of whether I'm going to vote or not. So that's why I asked. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passes eight zero. Call for a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to contract with best-suited payroll, with a best-suited payroll company for the borough's needs not to exceed $8,000 annually.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion.
I have a question. Do you have $8,000 here? How did you determine $8,000 would be what you would need? Or do you think you'd need more or less?
That is why I provided the not to exceed 8,000 annually. We're unsure yet, because as I was saying, I did reach out to the consortium, other managers and so forth, the companies that they're utilizing. I gauge the amount of employees they have compared to what they're paying and what they're asking for, whether it be the quarterlies and W3s and so forth. And I utilize those numbers to determine the estimate.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes, Ms. Danko. So is this the full, all payroll duties, or just the reports that, you know, we seem to, that we have to do? The quarterlies, the audits, the W2s, and so forth?
We will most likely have each department continue to log in their employee hours, as we're doing currently now. We'll still need that. But other than that, the quarterly taxes and the pensions and all of those items that must be taken care of, the payroll company will take care of that, the W2s and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
And if I may, a lot of this is going to be dependent on what software they're going to provide, if any. Can they utilize, can we utilize our software? There's a lot of what ifs. I wish I had more definitive answers for you, but I don't right now.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm surprised it's, the cost is $8,000, because that's pretty low from my experience in working with payroll companies. So that's a really good deal.
I may be coming back to you if something's different, but-
I think you will be.
The estimate right now is there, not to exceed, so that's why I'm just trying to get a ballpark figure. Thank you, though.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Do you want us to increase that a dollar amount?
It's up to council. If you feel the necessity to do that, I can certainly come back, or you can increase it.
I think we should, well, it's my personal opinion, we should leave it at the 8,000 for now, till she even determines what it is that she needs and wants, and what they're actually going to be doing.
And we will be getting these through a company, through the consortium, right?
It was suggested through them.
Suggested by the consortium, but is it one that's recognized by the consortium or no?
It depends, because I also reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, and I was provided with a lot of good information from them, too. So it will depend on my research.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you're comfortable with the eight?
For now, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, though, Helen.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion passes eight zero. Eight L, call for a motion to authorize the Borough Manager to advertise for a financial officer slash assistant treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
There's nothing in here with regards to a price range, salary, I'm sorry, yeah, salary, whether it includes, I don't know. I think there should be a price range in here, but there's not a lot of details.
We had that same conversation when we were advertising for the Borough Manager, and we kind of left it open-ended.
We have a budgeted amount for a financial director, so.
I believe the ad says something like, you know, compensation-
Misjudged on their experience, right?
Just leave it at that.
All right. And we had discussion in executive session, so.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I was just looking at your write-up, your draft, so you are going to tweak this-
Your microphone's not on, Carlita.
Yes, it is.
Is it? I just pulled to you, I'm sorry.
You're going to tweak this a little bit?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I had to do it in two days, so.
Okay. All right. Yeah, because I saw some things in here that I would take out.
It was the best I could do in two days. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, anyone else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Extensions? Motion passes seven one. Eight K, a call for a motion to approve payment number one for the Melvin Avenue Basin retrofit project for $147,328.65 to GNB Construction Group, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion.
Andrew Lubin.
All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions?
Abstained.
Motion passes seven one with an extension. Okay, that's the end of the action items. We're going to move on to council committee slash board and commission appointments. We have an opening on the Environmental Advisory Council for one three-year appointment, which expires on December 16th, 2024. We have one letter of interest from Deborah Colgan.
I'd like to nominate Deborah Colgan, please, to this position.
All right, we have a nomination for the position. Do we have another? We have a nomination. Do we have another? We have a nomination. Do we have another? Going once, going twice, we have a nomination. Do we have another? Nominations are closed. All those in favor of Deborah Colgan to fill the one three-year appointment to expire on December 16th, 2024? Okay, please vote. Yes or no?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Yeah, I know, I messed it up.
Sorry.
Motion passes eight zero. All right, we're going to do announcements before the council committee appointment openings, before we do anything else. We have a one civil service commission appointment that is open. It's a six-year term, remainder of the term, it expires on January 21st, 2026. We also have a library board, one position remaining for two years of a three-year term to expire on March 1st, 2024. We have another library board position. It's a one-three-year term position to expire on March 1st, 2025. We have a planning commission opening. It's a one-year, one-four-year appointment to expire on December 31st, 2025. Those are all the openings. If anyone's interested, they can send a letter of interest to the Borough Manager. Moving on to other business, do we have any other business?
I do. I just wanted to let everyone know that the picnic tables arrived, and they are currently being assembled, and they will be delivered to the borough at the end of this week. And John Leder has been notified, so that I will connect him so that he can work with the company and get everything all squared away and secured.
And where are they, where are they going to be placed, Helen?
They are going to be placed, two of them will be placed on South Delmore and Philadelphia Avenue in the open space field, and one will be placed at the Manor Park Playground.
Thank you.
And I guess I can say it's courtesy of Waste Management, so I'm going to give a thank you to them for helping us and getting this done.
Anyone else have anything?
Yes. I just wanted to announce, with regards to the openings on the committees, the library board met this evening, and I know there's someone who's interested. Hopefully, that will produce this gentleman's letter of interest after this evening. Also, regarding the library, they have a very large and inclusive Waves of Summer Fund programs that I'd like everyone to check out. There's quite a bit, and they still have the Storytime and so forth and so on, and some virtual programs as well. I'd like to comment with regards to, well, actually, I should have done this on the committees, I'm sorry. The school and council joint meeting was Wednesday, and there were just a few things that took place there. The closing of the sale of Manor Park School is expected the week of May 16th, and all the funds will go to capital, their capital funds. They're looking to do an Instagram page for PR. They're looking also to do a new Facebook page. Their health and safety plan has not really been, it's not complete, but they haven't really made any changes, except that there's still, masks are recommended but not required. There are two positions available, one, the school board vacancy, and they're also looking for one position of a resident to be on their tech board to, they meet about quarterly. They asked if we could advertise that on our social media page as well, once they get the ad to us. So that's forthcoming.
I just want to let you know, yes, Nancy, as long as they, no, as long as they get the information to us, we will certainly put it on our social media sites.
Okay. There was a lengthy discussion involving North Point Project, and how can the school district and council work together to put some positive messages out to the community, possibly having some sort of brainstorming session with all the stakeholders and/or even a survey? And what is it that people like about Marsville? What makes it great? How do we involve the community and work together? So that's, hopefully, we can do something with regards to that, and have a, start with, in our own groups, and our, I'm sorry, council and school board, and then maybe amongst us submit some ideas, offer these ideas to the public, see if we can get grants to help with marketing. The suggestion is, don't wait for the committees to be formed, gather all the information all along, and just keep it moving. And then set up a meeting with a state rep and our senator, maybe sometime during the summer, to share this information, and have, we could have it at the high school, and listen to all ideas. Be prepared to accept the growth of Northport. And possibly now's the time to restart the Business Outreach Committee, which used to be in, which was formed. Just make sure that everybody has a voice. Now, those are all the positive things that can happen to town, but I will say the negative parts of this is going to be the truck traffic, but there's no denying it. And I don't know, I don't necessarily know how to combat it. We don't, we try it every turn, but I know we'll just have to keep plugging away, and we'll see. And when we meet with the senator and their state rep, we can only encourage those new companies to have their trucks take a different route. We can't force them, but we can encourage them.
So I've been talking to all the companies down there. I have been talking to North Point, I've been talking to Waste Management, I have been talking to every single company along South Pennsylvania Avenue on the Falls Side. They are all very receptive, and they have been telling their truckers to take Tyburn Road. Now, a lot of them have outsourced trucks, so they can't really control them, they can only suggest to them the route that they need to take. However, their trucks are taking Tyburn Road, and I have noticed a difference. It's not great, but there is a slight difference, and I think with the chief's help in getting this done, and if we could get that motor carrier officer, I think that we'll probably be in better shape than if we just let them do whatever they want. But the companies are very receptive to getting the phone calls and the complaints. So if the residents notice a certain truck that is going by, I know that some of them have been calling me and telling me the names of the trucks, but you can't look at the cab, you can't look at the trailer, you need to look at the cab to see what the company is. And if you call them, they will talk to those trucking companies and tell them that they should be taking Tyburn Road. I've also been talking to Steve Santicero and his office in getting better signage put up in order to direct people, or I should say trucks, not to continue down to take the Route 1 exit, but to get actually off on Route 13. That will entail talking with PennDOT, but I am talking with them, and I am pushing it, and hopefully, something will come of it.
Yes, thank you. With regards to what you just said, that which trucking companies have agreed to this so that the people know which ones to call on? Now, we know Waste Management has been very adamant about their trucks and said, "Call us in a heartbeat." I don't know what other, like, if we're going to have the residents call on these companies or this, you know, which ones could they, would they be?
Whatever name is on the truck.
Okay. So any of them, is what you're saying, right? I don't know, I'm asking.
They see a name, then they should call, or they can call me, and I will handle it. I mean, I can't give you 50,000 trucking names. They have to look at the truck, and they have to figure out who it is. But you have to look at the cab and not the trailer.
Okay.
Because the cab is the name of the trucking company, not the trailer.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to continue with the school one for a moment, please. They're having a book drive this summer. Graduation is June 20th. They will be having a parade with the same route that they had last year. I don't know if they've contacted you yet, chief. And also, they mentioned there was an issue with the MMA, their issue, it was not the MMA's issue, there was an issue with regards to the flushing and some miscommunication and the late notice. But I talked to Mr. Rander about that, and they're working that out. On council's side, I did mention to them about the Box for the Cop event on May 20th from Friday, 6 to 8 p.m., and this is in cooperation with the Sheriff's Department of Bucks County. So I don't know, I know our officers aren't going to be there, but you're not, no? Okay. I did mention about the bridge placement project, North Pennsylvania Avenue. I know it's far off, but before we know it, it'll be here, and it will be a detour for all vehicles and pedestrians. The project time is, start time is still a year and a half away. And Mrs. Bauer, the art teacher, is working with the students regarding the mural on, at the- And Mrs. Bauer, the art teacher, is working with the students regarding the mural on, at the pavilion slash stage. Also, Summer Seat received a grant for their boiler. This, we really didn't have anything to do with it, but someone had called me about it to see if the Borough would sponsor or help sponsor or write a letter. But as it turned out, we didn't have to do that, and so, but they did get the grant, which is great. And I think that is, that is it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Council President, I just wanted to let council, everyone on council, know that I did provide grant info needed that I had gotten from Mr. Schroeder from Gilmore, and I was hoping you could read through that. That was a part of the update that I wanted to provide. I just wanted to make sure everybody saw that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, basically, 10 is moot. So we're going to move on to my favorite motion of the night. Can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Have a good night, everyone. All right, give me my.